Oh, we're streaming live, guys.
Yes, we are. Direct into YouTube. Awesome. Alright, we are live. Let me share the livestream. Let me start letting everyone in. Uh, let me make sure, see. Oh, let me fix that, cuz I think it's playing me twice. Okay. Met, oh. Thank you, guys, for coming in. Please make sure you mute your mic. Um, and we'll be getting started soon. We have a few people that registered with email, so we just wanna make sure we get everybody tuned in, and also I just wanna share the livestream to make sure that we have it everywhere. Um, again, if you are on the YouTube, you can, um, questions or anything that you want in the live chat. We'll be, we'll have moderators in there looking to make sure there's any question. So, uh, please mute your mics when you come in. Mute your mic, mute your mic. I'm gonna mute all moderators. You can just unmute yourself. Alright. Thank you, guys, for tuning in for the first session of Sequel Saturdays. Make sure y'all drop, uh, drop a, drop a one in the chat on Zoom and on YouTube. If y'all excited for Sequel Saturday, drop a one. I wanna see ones everywhere. Ones, ones, ones. Ooh, look, all the ones coming through. Okay, we decided Sequel Saturdays. Y'all already know me as Sequel. We beef, and so we trying to get right. We got Brian and Snow and Khadijah gonna show us how Sequel is running. I'm just trying to get everybody in. We had about, about eighty people that, um, signed up, so I'm just trying to make sure everybody gets in before we get started, so no one gets left behind. And then we'll just have, um, the coaches introduce themselves. Um, so yeah, just bear with me one second here. Also, if you're in the Discord, check the general chat. Um, our moderator, community manager Lex dropped, um, some of the links in there, so you guys can kind of be pre-prepared. And also Lex or Queen, if you can go on the, uh, YouTube and just drop it in the chat, so people on YouTube could have it as well. Alright, and you guys just give us another three minutes there, and then we'll go ahead and get started. So just give us three minutes, and we'll get started.
Oh, where is everyone tuning in from? I know I'm from Houston, Texas. Y'all wanna drop in the chat? Some, rep your locations, so we can see where everyone is tuning in from. Okay, Boston. Pittsburgh, okay. Do we have any other people from Texas? New Orleans, eh? I used to live in New Orleans. I love New Orleans. Nashville, DC, Jersey City, Atlanta. So we have people from all over. Charlotte, New Jersey, awesome. Florida, cool, cool, cool. So we have people tuning in from just about every corner of the, oh, I was just gonna say, we are in the US, but we see South Africa and Nigeria. So we have lots of people tuning in from all corners of the world. This is really awesome, so keep on repping your location and we'll get started.
Everybody, I'm from South Florida, Fort Lauderdale, any, any Florida. I did see some Florida. I see y'all going, uh, crazy in the, in the YouTube too, so we going, uh, just two more minutes here, we'll be getting started. I just wanna make sure everyone gets in, um, before we get started. We don't want nobody to miss out south Nigeria in the building. Um, so it's up to you. You can have your camera on if you want, if, um, or, or you don't have to. For the most part, we'll be doing, um, screen sharing, so it's up to you, um, how you wanna do it. Um, just give me a moment. Let me share this on our Discord and on our LinkedIn. So we can get it going. We are live. Or Sequel Saturdays. Alright. So, let's see, we got, let me add everybody else here. So what I'll do is, we'll just go ahead and get started. I'll just admit people as they come in. The recording will be available, so if you missed anything and you need to catch up, that's fine. We have about twenty-six people here with us in Zoom and about uh, a whole lot on YouTube. I can't even keep track, so looks like we doing good. So we can, I believe we have enough to get started. It's one oh six. We're gonna try to wrap this up no later than two oh six, um, at the latest, so, um, don't worry, we're not gonna take up your whole, uh, we're not gonna take up your whole weekend, you know. We know we all like Sequel. How many people like Sequel? Can I get a one in the chat if you like Sequel? Come on now, don't be like that. You know, we all gotta like Sequel. There you go. I know we like Sequel. On the YouTube too, I need a one in the chat if you like Sequel. Uh, if, if we don't like it, we gotta, you know, we gonna learn to love it. With Sequel Saturdays as a team, we gonna take it over together. You know, so we gonna tackle this beast. So, um, Brian, are you sharing the slides or is it?
I can. You want me to do that?
Uh, yeah, yeah, so we can, uh, go ahead and, um, get started. So like I said, everyone, right now, we're gonna go ahead and introduce the, um, speakers, and, um, we just have one speaker that's just running a little behind, but she'll be here shortly. So we'll go ahead and just introduce the speakers and the, the whole idea of what Sequel Saturdays is. So Sequel Saturdays is basically to kinda, as, it's like a big study group, right? It's a way that we can come together and tackle any challenges that we may have, um, together, you know, go through some of the basics. So a lot of people ask, is it beginner friendly? Um, I do want to remind everybody, since I have most of you here now, that I myself am a beginner. So everything that I do will always be beginner friendly, um, because I'm learning with you all. You know, I'm not, I'm not a teacher. I'm not a professional. You know, if anything, but, but what I do try to do for the communities, uh, you know, I try to promote it and just professionals have been gravitating to it, and so we're definitely happy to have, uh, Brian here, who has a plethora of years of experience. It says ten here, but I'm just gonna add another ten on that and give him twenty years of experience. And we have, uh, Khadijah, who will be with us shortly, who, um, also has some experience. You guys may know her in the Discord. She does help, um, with some sequel questions as well as Brian. And we also have Sat Novia, who I call Snow on Twitter. She's Ayo Snow, so y'all definitely go follow her. Uh, as fact, follow all the, uh, moderators. I'll have everything in the description. So we'll go ahead and just have you guys kind of introduce yourself, so we can start with Brian. You can just go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, uh, so much, Jamar. Yeah, so as you can see on the screen there, I'm a product management consultant, but, um, you know, I've been working in the data industry, mostly in financial services for, you know, that passed like ten or twelve or more years, so, um, you know, everything from just kind of working with Excel and SQL, a lot of Tableau, and, um, you know, a lot of different things over the years, and, um, now I'm, uh, building a team, uh, for strategic data analytics for, um, you know, for become my nine-to-five, and I really enjoyed being on the Discord and getting to know everybody, getting to know the community, and, uh, love helping out, so, um, you know, I'm sure I'll see you around, and I, I hope you guys enjoy the session today.
Awesome, awesome. So there are definitely big shout-outs to Brian. Oh, Khadijah will be with us shortly, so we'll go ahead and just hop over to Snow. Could just introduce yourself.
Hi, guys. Um, I'm Sanovia, but as Jay said earlier, you can call me Snow. Um, I don't really have a preference, either or is fine with me. Um, I'm currently, I'm also a newbie in this whole data world. Um, I'm pivoting from the healthcare industry into data engineering. Um, I took the Google Data Analytics course and found that I do like analyzing data, but I like coding and programming a little bit more. So, um, that's a little bit about me, and yeah, thanks, guys, for tuning in, and I hope you guys enjoy.
Awesome, and you guys know me. I'm Jamar. I go by DataJ on Twitter. Um, started the All About the Data community as a way to kind of have a, a study group. The way to have a study group and to, again, a way to like keep us all encouraged, um, which is kind of what, uh, this whole thing started based off of. So Brian, real quick, if we can just switch to the slide with the moderators, um, just so everybody can also meet the moderators. Alright, so, uh, these are our two moderators who are awesome. We have Queen, which we can have Queen come introduce herself, and then we have, um, Alexis, who is also, uh, the moderator and is also community manager within the, um, Discord and put together these wonderful slides. So Queen, where you at? You can come introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Queen and, um, business analyst. Uh, provide employers with valuable interpreted actionable and analyze data to drive growth. And, um, I'm switching over to data analysts, and, um, yeah, glad to have you all here.
Awesome, and we'll hop over to Lex.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Lex. You'll see me usually in the, the healthcare analytics channel, but, um, yeah, I'm a health information specialist currently, and I am studying for, um, data analytics, trying to get into health informatics. Um, so yeah, that's a little bit of what I do, and I'm happy to be a part of the community. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Um, so, uh, what's it called? We go back to the slide. Yep, so, um, we can go to the next slide, so this is, uh, my portion here. Um, oh, no, that's Khadijah's portion, sorry. Uh, so we're actually still waiting on her. Just give me a moment. Let me see if I hear from her. Alright, cool. So we'll actually have Brian go ahead and just take us through the setup. So everyone, um, you can follow along. If you don't have a dual screen, dual monitor, we'll just keep like a little space between, just to kind of give you, um, time to follow along. So we'll go ahead and get started. So everybody can follow along. Again, this will be recorded, so if you're not able to do everything during the recording, that's fine. You can always just double back.
Yeah, um, everyone can see my screen, okay? Cool. So, alright, cool. So, um, for those that are not familiar, we're using Postgres SQL, um, today. We have a really nice, um, you know, website online here, sequeliteonline.com, so go ahead and, um, you know, get that set up. If, if you don't already, just click on that, and you'll, you'll see. I'll show you what that looks like in a second, but what we're following today is something from, uh, Data with Danny. There's a nice GitHub repository out there, and here is a link right to the raw data that will give you everything you need to kind of set up the environment that we're gonna be working in today, all three of us. So, um, if you have any trouble, definitely, um, at any point, definitely put a, um, something in the chat, and somebody, you know, on the team, will give you a hand to kind of get you a, a point in the right direction. Um, so just so you know, by the time you end up in the right spot, you should see something that looks like this. Mine's maybe looks a little different. They have the dark mode and kind of zoomed it in, but something that resembles this. And then also this huge crazy-looking wall of code. That's what you need. So if you, if you haven't gotten there, then, um, definitely put, just call for help in, uh, one of the chat, the chat windows there. So just kind of zipping right through here. You go to, you go to the website, um, and then in the left-hand side here, you see the Postgres SQL. You can just click to connect, to connect to a new database. It kind of walks you through. That's pretty, pretty straightforward. Then you wanna grab this, um, SQL here, this, the, the whole thing, just hit Ctrl+A on your, on your keyboard to grab the whole thing, and drop it into one of these windows here. Okay? You hit run, and the system will kind of take care of everything and set up all of the tables that we're gonna be working through. Remember, you'll see something that says trading members, trading prices, trading transactions, that all gets set up for you. So that would take you to about right here.
One second, Brian. Um, Queen, if you get the chance, can you just drop the, the links in the, um, in the YouTube, please? Some people are saying if we-
I just dropped it.
You just dropped it? Okay, thank you.
Alright, cool. Alright, so I'll, I'll pause there for just a couple of seconds. Basically, at this point, if you wanna follow along, you should have something that resembles this kind of screen here, and your, your tables that are set up and everything there. If you wanna drop a one in chat to, you know, just to kind of let us, let everybody know that you're following along, if you are following along and you're good to go, or post a question. Cool. Cool, cool, cool. See a lot of those coming through. So, um, so that should be it for the setup. Um, Jamar, you want me to kind of dive right into my, my, um, questions here or what?
Yeah, yeah, you can, uh, go into yours, and then we'll just, uh, double back, um, when, when Khadijah come along.
Alright, cool. So at this point, you should have your environment running. You should have your database going. You should see this kind of looking window here with three different tables, trading members, trading prices, and trading transactions. So what I'm gonna be talking about is the prices table, and so I'm gonna run through a couple of examples, and again, we're using this data with Danny repository, and I took some of the questions here from step three, just to kind of orient you. Um, you know, and I kind of tweet them just to make it a little more interesting or something like that, but, um, you know, so just to kind of orient you, if you're not super familiar with SQL, you know, basically you can type your commands in this kind of a window here, and that will automatically query whatever is in this, in this database. And, um, you know, the database here is the trading database, and there are these, uh, or excuse me, the trading schema, and these different tables, members, prices, and transactions. And then you can look at the columns as well, and we have, you know, you can kind of read them, ticker, market. We have some different, um, string types of columns. We got a date in here, some of the numbers, and more strings. So we can do what we want with the code to return those values. This is a very common kind of use case. Whoops, my questions, yeah. Alright, so kind of getting started, really with the code here. Um, let's just start off pretty simple, looking to figure out how many records are in the particular table. Like, that's, that's kind of an interesting que- question, a good place to get started with. So in this, be on the lookout for this count, um, you know, function that we're gonna be using, very, very common, and then this as keyword as well, which, uh, helps you with like figuring out aliases, so you can kind of rename your tables or whatever. So right back here, question number one. How many records are there in the prices table? So what we're gonna do, just straight up, hit select. We wanna count, as I kind of mentioned there, this gives you a nice count. That star, um, term there just lets you pull everything back, you know, kind of a wild card. And then we're just going to tell it which, which table do we wanna pull from? So we know that we want from trading prices. And this should give us how many records there are in the prices table. Cool, and then you see the results down below. We have our count, and we have the thirty-four oh four records. So now we know that there's, you know, thirty-four hundred or so records in this table. So one thing that's, that's kind of good to make your code like a little bit more readable, rather than just kind of saying count, you can kind of do some formatting here, which is cool. And also, we will add a little alias here, so we now can say as record count. So now, instead of just saying count, it says record count. And you can get a little more creative with that over time, but kind of help, helps to kind of keep things organized. So the next thing that we're gonna do is look at another question here, which is, the, the, the next question we're gonna look at is, what's the earliest and latest market date values for each ticker? So if you were analyzing this database, this dataset, this is a question that you might wanna ask there. So usually straight up, you just wanna kind of, you know, kind of get started again here from the prices, uh, wait, from trading dot prices. So they're just gonna return everything. There's a kind of a starting point, so we can see here that we want the earliest and latest market day values for each ticker. And, um, so we can see here that the, the market day column, and what we're gonna do there is is format this a little bit, and we're gonna do this. We're gonna do a the earliest, so that would get, that would be a min. What's the minimum value in this market date? Column, and let's go ahead and add an alias as earliest. And then we're also gonna get the max market date as latest. Now we gotta put a comma in here, so then, so there's two values there. Little formatting. Okay, so what's the earliest and latest market date value for each ticker? So that's, so I need to actually have in there, each ticker needs to be included. So we're gonna do that, and we're actually gonna use a group by because we need to basically, you know, kind of tell the code earliest of what? Earliest of the ticker, so we have to group it by the ticker. So we're going to do, um, ticker by this column. We have Ethereum and, uh, B, ETH and Bitcoin in there. So now you can kind of, you, this is, this is good. This is showing us for each of the two tickers. What's the earliest date and what's the latest date? Now unfortunately, um, I didn't include ticker in here, so you kind of can't tell which is which. That's kind of annoying, so I'm just gonna go back and add that in. So there we go. Here's how we figure out what is the earliest and latest market date value for each of the tickers. So that's pretty cool. Alright, let me go back to the slides here real quick. We have done question number one. We did question number two. And let me just pause. Any questions, everybody? I know, I think we have some issues with some of the links going around, but is everybody able to kind of follow along there and, and see what's happening? Uh, if so-
Real, real quick, before we get to questions, um, for some reason, when we drop it in the YouTube chat, it's deleting the link. So what we'll do is, once the video is published, for those that's not into Zoom, I'm gonna put the link in the description box, so when you watch the replay, you can just follow along. I'll put the link in the description box. I'm not sure why it's deleting it out of the chat like that. So, um, yeah, I'll do more research into that to see how I can fix that for next week, but for now, if you're into YouTube, um, you could just follow along, and the link will be in the description on for the replay. Um, and also, if you're on the Zoom and you have any questions, we can take about two questions live, if you wanna unmute yourself. Just two questions live, if you have any questions about what Brian did, or if you need him to repeat anything.
Yeah, any, any questions out there? I don't wanna, I'll keep going.
Okay, hi. Hello.
Hey, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Alright, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, um, I just joined, actually, so, um, I didn't get question one, uh, you saw. So I would like you to like repeat question one, cuz I would actually have issues with my settings and order.
Oh, gotcha.
I'll repeat question one. I'll be glad. Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure. Alright. Yep, yep. So question one was, was pretty straightforward. You know, um, really, we're just looking at counting the records from this particular table. So if you were able to get everything set up, you know, here, the question we're answering is, how many records are there in the prices table? And it's kind of a good place to get started with. If you're looking at like a brand-new dataset, you just kind of wanna know, what do I got? So this is really, uh, pretty easy. So, you know, the, the commands here are just right here. You would, you would type out select, count, star, that gives you everything. We're giving it alias, just to make it a little easier for ourselves. From what table? That's it. You hit run, and you get a nice sweet error message. There we go. Thirty-four oh four. Sound good? Any more questions?
Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Glad to hear, man.
Yes, we have one from, um, the YouTube. One person that had X. Um, they got lost on the plane where they're selecting, when you're selecting at trading members. Didn't specify which question. Uh, that's for question one and two, so those-
Okay, cool. Yeah, we, we're looking at, um, at trading, uh, prices, so we want that, we want this table right here is what we're pulling from. So yeah, just again, I can, I can really, really just go through this one more time, so what we wanna know is how many, how many records are there in the prices table, but even, even more basic than that, just straight up pulling right from a table. If we just say select, here's the command, select star from, now we have to say what table it is that we want. So we're looking at the trading schema, and then the prices table. And that's how you can, that's how you, you know, basically query or ask the database, what do we got? So that's pretty much the most basic SQL command you, you can have, once you're connected to the database. Hope that answers that question. Any other questions out there?
I think we're good to go.
Alright, cool. So let's move on to the next question then, which would be alright, now we're getting into a little more, little more interesting stuff. So the question here is, what's the average price for Bitcoin in the year 2020? Okay, cool. So what we're gonna be talking about this one, everything I've already kind of covered, if you're kind of following along, we'll look at average, which is, uh, just returns the average of any column, and then also we're gonna um, use between, which basically returns any records that fall between two dates. So that's how we do some like additional filter, alright? So moving over to question three here, we wanna say, what's the average bit, uh, price for Bitcoin in 2020? So, let me just make sure I got my stuff. Good to go. Alright, so again, just like, this is actually where I get started every single time. I'm gonna start something. I just say, what's select star from, I know I want prices again, so I'm gonna say trading prices. And we hit run. We got that there, okay. So now, I'm gonna go ahead and I know I want average price. So I'm gonna say average, that's the function for average price. I'm gonna give an alias, just to make it a little easier for myself to understand, average price. Um, and I know we only want Bitcoin. So we're gonna add, and this is, this is brand-new. We haven't covered this yet today, but this is, we're gonna add a filter, which the way you do that is in SQL is where, using a where clause. And then we're gonna say where ticker equals BTC. So now, we're just gonna say, we're just gonna say, um, this will give us the average price for BTC. Now, I know, I'm just gonna run this to show you guys what, what it looks like. Okay, alright, cool. It worked. I thought I was gonna have to do a group buy in there, but I didn't have to. So that's good. So now this is the average price, but it's not just for 2020. So that's a problem. We gotta figure that out. So also in this where clause, so we wanna filter this, right? So we want only the, only the years. So we're gonna say where, um, and market date is between um, two dates. So I'll just kind of put these in as placeholders, these little quotes in here. And we're gonna type out our two dates that we wanna query between, so that would be twenty twenty-one dash zero dash one, um, January first of twenty twenty, excuse me, and December thirty-first, so that's twenty twenty dash twelve dash thirty-one. So this gives you the average price for Bitcoin in 2020, so we're using this between function in our where clause to pick those dates. And that's your answer. So far, so good. Cool. Um, let me pause there real quick. Any, any questions that are popping up that somebody wants to bring up, or I can kind of move on to the next session? Next question? Next question?
So we could take about two questions if there's any questions.
Cool.
Also, we have Kadisha in the building as well. So once Brian is done, we'll just have her introduce herself really quick and then she'll jump into her session. And we'll go from there. Once again, thank you guys for tuning into SQL Saturdays. Make sure you hashtag SQL Saturdays. All about the data on Twitter, so we can continue to grow this, you know, as we continue to do it every week and all that good stuff. Appreciate y'all. Let's get back to it.
All right, all right. Uh, this one, this question number four is, it definitely ramps up in the kind of a difficulty level here. Um, so. You know, always like a challenge, but this question is looking at what's the monthly average price for Ethereum in 2020? So the reason that one's kind of complicated is that you're now not just looking at the straight up average, you're looking across all dates or like a particular date range. You're looking at for each month, what's the average price for a particular year? We also have a kind of an additional requirement here where the results we get have to be sorted by date, you know, by chronological order there. And we also have to format everything in dollars. So we can't just have like random numbers. We have to actually make it kind of look nice. So the, the key terms I'm going to be using here will be extract, which returns a date part. So like a year, a month, a day, whatever, from a particular date. Order by, um, you know, orders the results in a particular way. Cast, which can format one data type to another, really turn it in, like convert it from one data type to another. And then this special little function called to car, which will format any date column into like any kind of text you want, using a bit of like a template. So these are really common, especially that, you know, these are all pretty common things that you would run into in like a normal situation. So let's just dive right into it. All right. So the first thing that we're going to do here, as we kind of always get started with, is go and just grab everything from the. From the tickers, uh, the prices table. Right? Kind of get started there. And we know that we want the ticker. Cause we're going to look for just Ethereum here, I know that. So let me go ahead and add this to the where clause. Ticker. Was Ethereum. And then, so okay, so now we, we have just, just Ethereum, we know that we want that. Okay, cool. The other thing that we're going to do here is we're going to look at the, we also know that we want the average price. So that's good. And then, because we're doing the, the average here, we need to have that group by for the aggregate. And so we're going to group by ticker, uh, by the ticker there too. And we go ahead and rerun this. And now we see. That's the average price for all the Ethereum with really no other filters in there. So we know that we want 2020. So I'm going to show you guys. A pretty nifty way in Postgres to filter by a particular year. And so we, we're going to add here, we're just going to say extract, whoops. The year from, where do we want to pull from? We know we want it from the market date. Okay. So wherever the year from market date equals. Twenty twenty. So now we're going to get the same exact result, but it's going to be only for twenty twenty. Cool. So three hundred and, three hundred and seven dollars. All right. So we're almost there. Next thing we're going to do is we don't want just the average, like straight up, we want it by, by month. So we can just go ahead and in here and put in market date. But that would give us like every single day that we had one. So that's not good enough. What we want to do is use this to car function. To car functioner. And we're going to, this allows you to kind of format it in any way that you would want to. So this is like a little format for. Basically, the year and the month. It's kind of like a nice, easy way to read that. So we're taking all those market dates, we're making them, we're really converting them all into a month. And then we're going to do this as the, as the month. And this will give us the ticker by month and the average price. So, but we also, because we're now aggregating by that, we have to include this in the group by. And. Check it out. We have Ethereum. And with our months and then the average for each of those months. Now, let's go back up to our question here. The answer must be sorted in chronological order. Okay, so that's a problem. Even though I think it happens to be sorted that way, but we really need to be explicit and say that, so. Or by month. By month. So that takes care of that. And go ahead and run it. And you can see they're all ordered by month, but the last one here is formatted in dollars. Okay, this gets pretty complicated. Or, you know, a little more advanced. There are some built in functions in Postgres and lots of, pretty much every database system has their own kind of way of handling this. Here's how you do in Postgres, you, you need basically need to convert this double precision to other data types and then format the whole thing as currency. Okay? So here we go. We're going to first come, convert this to a float. And then we're going to make it a numeric, which basically makes it a. A, 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 a number, like an integer or something that we can work with, that the system can work with. And then we're going to use this cast. Function, which is kind of like magic, because all we have to do is say, we want to cast this as money. And then like the system automatically knows, so like put it in the currency and add the decimal points, all that stuff, exactly like whatever your location is. So it's a really, really easy way to get this to work and it's very efficient and fast and all sorts of stuff. So then we're just going to add an alias that we, we can like know what we're working on here. And this is going to be their average Ethereum price. By month for just Ethereum. And there you go. You can see that nice, nicely formatted dollars and cents and all that stuff. And. That's pretty much it. So I'll pause there for, for questions before handing it off to. To Kadisha, I think we're, we'll go to next. But any questions on what I just covered there?
Yes. So coming from YouTube, we have Susan. She asks, can we filter with year? Market date equals twenty twenty instead, since I'm only extracting the year. I believe that's coming from step three and into this question. So question three and question four.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Good point. You, you absolutely could. You, there's, there's so many different ways that you could do this. You could. That's a great point. You actually could have done this exact same, this method here. To say market date is between, or you can use this extract. So it's really two different ways of doing the same thing. And there are probably other ways of doing it. As well. So yeah, yeah, great question. Lots of different ways to do it. Cool. Any other questions out there?
Awesome. So again, you know, you guys have all head on Twitter, just hashtag all about the data sequel Saturdays. And again, if you're just coming in on the YouTube, YouTube is not allowing us to put the links in the chat right now. So we'll have it in the description box, once the recording is published. And then you can just kind of go back and follow along like that. Uh, we'll go ahead and bring Kadisha up. We'll just have her introduce herself really quick and we'll have her jump into her segment and we'll keep it going. Drop a one in the chat for Brian. Let's show Brian some love. YouTube. Zoom, drop a one for Brian if that was insightful. Make sure you go back to the recording and just, you know, if you got to practice or redo anything and any questions that you have. You know, you can always double back next week as well if we're not able to answer it today. But Kadisha, let's go ahead.
Okay, uh, so my name is Kadish, Kadisha Ryan, and I am doing a. Data and visualization analyst co-op internship in the telecommunications industry in the Atlanta metropolitan area. In Georgia. I just wanted to verify that y'all can see my screen. Y'all see the, the split screen, right? Right? Okay, cool. All right. So we're going to actually take a U-turn in difficulty and like. Get to some like more beginner questions. So this first one here is show only the top five rows in the trading dot members table. So one, uh, good force of habit that I want to recommend, uh, and this will help with doing more complex queries. Is to start building your queries from the from statement. So I'm just going to put select here. And from trading dot members. It doesn't specify, uh, what columns we're going to choose. So we're just going to do select star to select all columns. Here specifies that they only want the top five rows. So we're going to use limit. Five. And that will give us our answer here. Top five here. Moving on to the next question, sort all the rows in the table by first name and alphabetical order and show only the top five rows. Okay, so again here, I want to start from the from clause. So from. Trading dot members. Again, it doesn't specify what columns we're going to choose. So we're going to do select star again. And it wants us to sort, so we're going to use order by. Order by first name. It wants it in alphabetical order. So by default, order by goes by descending, which you can also do, no, sorry, it goes by ascending. You can also do descending. So alphabetical order, that's automatically set to ascending. So we're going to do that. And it wants the top three rows again. So we're going to use limit and we're going to do limit three. And then we run and it's the top three here. And as you see, the first name is in alphabetical order. Moving on to the next one. Which records from trading dot members are from the United States? So. Again, it's, though it's simple, I want to start with the from clause. So from trading dot members. Uh, and it doesn't specify the rows, so we're going to do select star again. Now we're going to use a filter with the where clause and it says which records from the United States region. So. Using this column here, where region, we're going to use equals. And we're going to have to use single quotations. You can't use double quotations in SQL. So United States. And with the, the run clause again, and you see, or the run button, and you see everything's filtered down to just the United States region. Moving on to the last one here. So select only the member ID and the first name columns for members who are not. From Australia. So. Again, going to start with the select or the from clause. So from trading dot members. So this time they tell us what, uh, columns to choose. So. First, uh, member ID. And also to know, you want to make sure your code is pretty clean and readable. So this is actually a good way to make it look a lot more readable rather than. Do everything on the, on one line. So first name. So select trading members or phone trading dot members, select member ID, first name, who are not from Australia. So last time we used the equal comparison operator. And for not, there's actually two options you can use. So where region, you can either do a. Back to back, less than and greater to sign. And you can do, where region does not equal Australia. And then when you hit run, you will get everything that's not in, well, it didn't let us choose the. Region, but these are all the non-Australia regions. But you can also use the exclamation point and. Equal sign and you'll get the same. Uh, result. So that is it for me. Is there any questions?
We can take about two questions from the Zoom, from the Zoom chat. If anyone has any questions and you want to come on live. If not, then moderators, we could just see if there's any on YouTube that maybe wasn't covered.
Okay, so one person is, all right, so, um, they didn't really stay a question, but I understand what they're coming from. So for question four, it says, select only the member ID and first name columns. They're asking, why wouldn't you put the region there? As, um, part of it.
I mean, this is just going off of what the question's asking. So I mean, you can, it's just, uh, we're just going off of what the, the questions specifically asking. We were doing, uh, select all and it's only three columns. So it kind of also. Gives you practice on selecting particular columns, but it's not necessarily wrong. You just want to. Put in the query that specifically answers whatever the question is. And it's highlighting two specific columns.
Awesome. So that's it for the questions. Cool, cool. So we got next up, Ayo Snow, where you at?
All right. Can everyone hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can. I think Kadisha, you just have to, um, stop sharing your screen. There you go. So now Snow can share. Cool.
Can everyone see my screen? Okay, cool.
Chat for Kadisha, dropping one in the chat list. So some love.
Give it up for Kadisha and Brian and House Me. Okay, so, um. I am going to be exploring the transactions table. So this right here just kind of shows you, um, each of the columns. Where we can kind of look at what we're looking at for this particular table. So we have our transaction ID, which is going to be our primary key. We have our member ID, ticker, which is Bitcoin or ETH, transaction date. Self-explanatory. The transaction type is either going to be a buy or a sell. Quantity is the amount purchased for that particular transaction. And then of course, we have a timestamp as well. So that's just a little bit about the table that I'm doing. So I'm going to go ahead and dive right into the first question. Um. Hold on. Okay, so my first question is, um, how many unique members exist in the? Transactions table. So one of the key terms that we'll introduce here that we haven't gone on before is the distinct. Um, and we'll use this in conjunction with the count, um, the count clause that, um, Brian went over. So since it's asking for unique members, we want to make sure that we remove the duplicate values. Because in our transactions table, each member can make more than one transaction. Therefore, they might appear multiple times in our column. And if we scroll through here really quickly, we can see like, for example, A A B three, two, three. I see it here, here. So I see it more than once. So in this case, instead of counting all of the count columns, I mean, all of the member IDs. We want to just count the distinct member IDs. So we're going to start with our basic select command. We're going to use the count function. But when we use the count function, we're going to add this distinct clause in front of the. Column that we want to count, which is our member ID. And then we're going to take that, of course, from our. Transactions table. So there. And then we're going to run it. So that tells us that we have fourteen different members, um, that are transacting throughout this entire table. Alternatively, if we would have just counted the member IDs. We would get twenty two, we would get a misleading number because again, those member IDs can, can appear multiple times in different roles. On this, um, particular table. So that's why we will use the distinct, um, clause in this, um, particular query. Okay, um, let's go to my second question. So my second question is asking about. What is the final quantity holding of each, for each? What is the final quantity holding of each for each member? And then they want to sort the output from highest ETH holding to lowest. So we have a couple of things that we're doing here and also introducing a couple of new key terms. Number one, we're going to introduce the sum function because we need the total sum of that quantity for each member. And when we do that, we also have to use that with the case when function because we have to account for both buys and sells. So when we're taking the sum, we don't want to add sales to that because we should take that away. They sold it, they no longer have that, so we need the negative. We need the negative of that. So what that looks like is first, we're gonna select everything that we need, so we know we need the member ID. Because we want to know it per member and then we're also going to select the sum here. Of the quantity and just to make things a little bit easier, we're gonna alias this as the total. Purchase or total ETH holdings, we can say. There, and then from there, we need to, let's see, select memory some code. Okay, so since we only are interested in ETH, we need to apply a filter here. Oh, no, sorry, sorry, we gotta take it from the table first, select from the trading transactions. And then we're gonna apply a filter, we're only interested, oh wait, I'm sorry, guys, I'm doing the wrong thing, we're using case when. So I don't even need, sorry, let me back up. Okay, so when we're using some, we're gonna take the case when, here, let me make it easier to read. So when the transaction type is a buy. Then we want to take that quantity. But alternatively, when the transaction type is a sell, we want to subtract that. So we're gonna take the inverse, we're just gonna add negative in front of that. Otherwise, don't return anything and then we're gonna end it there. And then we're gonna alias this right here, so. Okay. And I were gonna take this from our trading table. So we've already got our case when we have a buy, our case where we have a sell, otherwise don't add anything in terms of our sum function. We alias that as our final ETH holdings, now we're gonna pull it from our trading transactions or our trading dot transactions table. We're gonna filter it, since we're only interested in ETH, we're gonna filter that ticker to only show us ETH. And then it wants us to sort the output from lowest to highest, so first we need to group each member, group by the member ID. And then from there, we can order by. I think it said in descending, yeah, so we have the descending clause and if I didn't mess up anywhere. Final ETH holdings, oh, forgot my order by. And so this shows us our member ID with their final ETH holdings, group by member ID sorted in descending order. Okay, so I know I kind of like messed up a little bit there, oops. Might have confused someone, so if you have any questions, any questions in the chat or on YouTube. Let me know, otherwise we can go to the last one.
We can take about two questions if anybody from Zoom or YouTube has any questions. Also, we finally got the link to work, so we'll be more prepared for next week. I do have it pinned in the chat, so you guys can go ahead there. It'll still be in the description once the live is recorded as well, so we'll be more prepared for next week. Definitely apologize about that, but we appreciate you guys coming out to Sequel Saturdays. Let me get a two in the chat this time, if y'all excited about Sequel Saturdays, because I'm excited, I ain't gonna lie. Well, we got two, 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 we got two twos everywhere, I want to see all the twos, Sequel Saturdays, we live, let's go, Snow, bring it back.
Alright, when I like click back, it just cleared out my questions, so. I already had the third one set up, we're just gonna have to adjust, let me go back to the slide show. Okay, so our final question is asking us which members have sold over five hundred Bitcoin? And it wants us to sort that output from how highest to lowest. So essentially what it wants us to do is to group the data and then filter that group data based on the sum. But the problem here is we can't use the where clause with aggregated data, so we need a way around that. And there's actually a couple of ways that you can do this, and so I'm just gonna run through all three of them. The first one is using the having function. So we're gonna select everything we need, I'm just gonna look over here to make sure I'm following the question, so we need the member ID. Are we looking at Bitcoin? Hold on, let me just copy this question here. Okay, alright, so we need the member ID. We need the sum, we need to take the sum of the quantity because we're interested in those who have sold over five hundred Bitcoin. So we're gonna need that. And we're gonna alias that as Bitcoin sold quantity. Alright, and then we're gonna take that from our transactions table, we're gonna filter it for our Bitcoin ticker. And then as well as, because we're only interested in sales, so we also need to filter the transaction type for sales only. So we add the end clause to that where. To that. Where filter and then we're interested in sell. Um, we're gonna, we want it per member, so we have to again group it by the member ID. Right, and then, do, 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 do. This is where we, so now we have selected our member ID, we've used the sum function to get the quantity. And we alias that as Bitcoin sold quantity. We took that from the trading transactions or the transactions table from the trading schema. We filtered it for only Bitcoin because it's only asking us for Bitcoin and we're only interested in sales. And then we have grouped that by our member ID. So instead of using, because again, we can't use the where filter on aggregated data, so we would have to use having here. And then we want to use that sum function again, quantity, we want it to be over five hundred. And then I think it wants us to order it too, right? And then we're gonna order that by this alias here, the Bitcoin sold quantity. So we can have it in order. And I run that, oh, forgot to add the descending. Um, so now we see each member that have sold over five hundred Bitcoin in descending order from highest to lowest. The way we can use a where clause with this particular question is we would have to either use a subquery. Or we can use a what was called a CTE, which is like where, if you're familiar with like Python or anything, you're like storing of that of variable. So you're essentially storing a subquery as a new table and then from there you will select everything and then use the filter. I mean, the where filter with that new command. So I'm gonna start with the CTE, so well, let's just upgrade first. So when we're doing a subquery, it's like we're selecting a query within a query. So we're gonna start off with our select from. And then we're gonna start our inner query. So our inner query essentially is gonna be everything that we already did in this first query that we. So we still need the same information such as our member ID and we still want the sum of the quantity. Always start on the alias says.
I thought so.
Oops, sorry. Cool, and then we're gonna take that from our transactions table. We're gonna filter it for our ticker that we're interested in. Oops, can't use double, gotta use single, where. Still only interested in sales, so our transaction type is a sell. And then make sure, yeah, and then we just need to group it. So what it is, it's gonna do is it's gonna start with this query and what we're doing is we're selecting everything. The star takes everything out from this inner query. And so since we're using, since this select function, this so this query, the inner query right here is gonna run first. When we go back and run that outer query, I can use the the where filter with select. Because it's not with that group by, that's in the inner query, so I can go ahead and use where here, oh wait, no, no. I have to alias this, I got so pretty. Then I can say where the sum. Coin. Sold quantity. It's greater than five hundred. And then order it by that same column. And assuming I have no typos, we should get the same as I think. Bitcoin sold quantity. I always forget my buy whenever I'm using certain. Okay. Why is it, hold on, select from, select memory some quantity, yes, Bitcoin sold from where and group by, oh, I don't know. Member ID. Where Bitcoin sold quantity. Okay, select member ID some quantity. From where and. What is? It's not running. Okay, um, let me see, let me look at my notes really quickly, see.
Hey, Snow, I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Is BTC case sensitive?
No, it's not case sensitive. But let's see. Can't figure out where my. Oh, I don't, okay, maybe it is case sensitive and then I forgot to order it. Sorry, so yes, it is case sensitive, I could have sworn, what was it? Okay, um, so let's just run this and then it'll give us like the same results that we saw before. And then the last one using a CTE kind of uses the same logic as the subquery. Instead of it, you you're reading the inner query first, it more so you follow the logic in chronological order. So what you would do is you would alias the, you would start off aliasing the CTE. So you would create the CTE first using literally all this same data from here. Don't want to have any like typos, I'm just gonna copy it. And then, then you will select everything from this.
Really quick, can you, is it possible to drag that down so they can see the code more? Yeah.
So this is using subquery. And then this is using. Um, okay, so then you want to select everything from this CTE that you just created. And then from there, you can go ahead and filter because you can use the where clause with the select function. So where BTC sold quantity. Oops, it's greater than five hundred, then we're gonna order. And. No way, I always forget this part. And if I did everything correctly, we should get literally the same exact result. So let me drag this back up so we can kind of compare and then run it. Of course. This is.
Just need from, I think there.
Yeah. Select. There we go, thanks, Brian.
I do what I can, Snow.
Yeah. Glad to have an expert online, okay, so now this gives us again the same exact result. So this was just three different ways to run the same exact query, so. If anyone has any questions in the chat on YouTube, let me know, otherwise I will kick it back to Jay.
Awesome, awesome. Alright, that was sequel, sequel Snow, that's what we'll call her now, sequel Snow. But appreciate you guys tuning in, definitely follow all the moderators on Twitter, I posted most of them in the the chat. I don't know if we were showing the last slide, Brian or Kadisha, were we showing? Relax, were we showing, did we have another slide to show? Okay, yeah, let's, so let's pull this up. Yeah, let's pull the slide back up, we'll also provide a copy of these, so everything will be in the YouTube description link. Just give us about twenty-four hours to get everything settled in with that and then. I think Snow, you have to stop sharing your screen. So you'll have the link to, you'll have the link to everything that we did today. The link to the sites and the question that we answered and everything. If you signed up on the email list, I'll email, I'll email blasted out to you guys. Just please remember to check your spam because being that it's a new. My first time doing this email blast, that's why I went to spam, that'll probably change over the coming weeks. Also, we're gonna send out a survey to you guys, if you can just take that for us, please, so we can see like where we can improve, things we can add on. If you guys think we should extend the time beyond hour, things like, things to that nature. And also make sure you guys follow me on Twitter if you're not already, at AJ in tech, no, I would appreciate it. But definitely follow my moderators as well. And if you guys are in the Discord and you have any other questions that we didn't answer, feel free to drop it in the Sequel Saturdays chat. Feel free to drop it in the Sequel Saturdays chat, and we can try to make sure we. Uh, answer them next week or answer them in the chat, if, if anything. Um, so I believe we'll have the survey also in the YouTube description, so if you were not in the Zoom. You can still also submit your survey, because every voice matters as we try to accommodate everyone when it comes to this. Unfortunately, Zoom only allows a certain amount of people in, which is why we decided to also go live on YouTube. So that, you know, no one is left behind, so, um, with that being said, if there's no questions. I'll see you guys in the Discord, see you guys next Saturday, same time. We'll probably have another forum go out for people to put their emails in, so we can, um. Try to give everybody a chance to make it into the Zoom. And we'll make sure that we, now that we figured out how to put the YouTube, how to put the link in the YouTube chat, we'll make sure that everyone has that. Um, before, so what we'll kind of do is give, we'll give like a ten-minute timeframe for everybody to get the links and everything up before we get started. So that everyone can follow along, because that's what will make it more fun, that's why we're tuned into Sequel Saturdays. If not, we can just watch a tutorial, but appreciate you guys tuning in, let's get back to the weekend, keep studying, keep having fun, enjoy your family, all that good stuff. And I know some people is late, so y'all have a good night, and for the ones that's on the east side, y'all have a good afternoon. Sequel Saturdays, we out, let's go, all about the data, baby.
See you guys, bye now. Alright, thank you guys, thank you.
You got it.